Are we online?
Yeah.
Robbie, you got it?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you just be specific about your background for this?
Okay.
He's with us.
They win. Okay. All right, 6:30 PM. A special call meeting in the city of Brantville will come to order. I need an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Raise your hand, say aye please, so we can vote. Mr. Whitekaiser?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Decision on acceptance of the 2023 Rural Business Development Grant for the renovation of the Freight Depot, letter of conditions and other required documentation, presented by Ms. Tamika Lucas. Thank you for being here, wonderful area director in an office, Rural Development, USDA. I think we can start with what you need to go through. Come on.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tamika Lucas, area director with the USDA Rural Development in Millin. Congratulations. The city of Brantville has been selected for the fiscal year 2023 Rural Business Development Grant in the amount of $170,000 for the renovation of the interior of the Freight Depot into a multifunctional community center, event venue, and food pantry. I am here this evening to deliver the letter of conditions for the Rural Business Development Grant. Once I read the letter of conditions, I will allow the city council to vote before reviewing the required points. The letter states, Dear Mr. Proctor, Rural Business Cooperative Service hereby establishes conditions which must be understood and agreed to by you before consideration may be given to your application. Any changes in project costs, sources of funds, scope of services, and/or any other significant changes in the project or applicant must be reported to and approved by the Rural Business Service by written amendment to this letter. Any change is not approved by RBS shall be caused to discontinue processing of the application. This letter is not to be considered as grant approval or as a representation as to the availability of funds. The docket may be completed on the basis of a grant not to exceed $170,000. The grant will be considered approved on the date a signed copy of Form RD 1940-1, Request for Obligation of Funds, and RD 4282-2, Rural Business Cooperative Service Financial Assistance Agreement is mailed to you. Please complete and return the attached form 1942-46, Letter of Intent to Meet Conditions, if you desire that further consideration be given to your application. By signing that form, Letter of Intent to Meet Conditions, you are hereby agreeing and acknowledging that this Rural Business Development Grant is a non-continuing, non-renewable grant, and any approvals of this grant in no way constitutes an assurance that future grants will be available. If the conditions set forth in this letter, except those to be met by at grant closing, are not met within 60 days from the date hereby, Rural Business Cooperative Services reserves the right to discontinue the processing of the application. That is not appealable. Grantees accepting funds from other sources for use in completing projects partially financed with RBS funds will present evidence of commitment of funds from other sources. This evidence will be made available before grant closing. The funds provided by the applicant or other sources must be spent proportionately, and if leveraged funds are not utilized proportionately with the grant, the agency reserves the right to take legal action, including terminating the grant. The funding period for this grant will begin on the date the grant has been obligated. The project timeframe for completion of this project is March 30th, 2024. To assure the high standards of honesty, integrity, and impartiality maintained by agency employees, we need to identify any agency assistance to be provided to agency employees, their relatives or other business, or close personal associates. This includes grants to organizations. If you know of any, if you know of any relationship or association you may have with an agency employee, please provide this information. Number one, requirement for system for award management. This grant is further conditioned upon you providing the agency with evidence of your unique entity identifier, number, and evidence that you are registered in the System for Award Management System, SAM. Your organization is actively registered with a current expiration date of August 1st, 2026. Please ensure that this account is kept current. You, as a recipient, must maintain accuracy of your information in SAM until you submit the final financial report required under this award and all grant funds under this award have been dispersed or deobligated, whichever is later. This requires that you review and update the information at least annually after the initial registration, and more frequently if required by changes in your information or another award term. Use of funds. The proposed grant funds will be used to renovate the historic Freight Depot into a multifunctional community center, event venue, and food pantry. The project will support the development of small and emerging private business enterprises in rural areas in accordance with the application package and submitted for an enterprise grant project, or as amended and approved by USDA Rural Development. Any changes in the proposed use of funds must be submitted in writing to USDA Rural Development and receive proper written approval. Applicant contribution. The grantee, along with project support, agrees to provide $170,000 matching funds to be applied to the project. The matching funds will be applied to the project at the same time grant funds are applied on a prorated basis as follows. Hundred percent of matching funds prior to any release of grant funds, the grantee will provide documentation sufficient to USDA Rural Development that matching funds have been expended on the approved project. The scope of work. The grantee will administer the grant in accordance with the approved scope of work. USDA Rural Development comments and required changes, if any, in the grantee's scope of work will be provided by the grantee. If the scope of work indicates the grantee will subcontract for the grant assistance to be provided, the grantee agrees to not turn, agrees to not turn responsibility of the grant project over to the contracting party and will oversee the control of the project through completion. Any changes in the scope of work must be approved in writing by USDA. Should project not be completed by the date indicated in the scope of work, grantee must request in writing to USDA and receive approval for an extension of time complete, to complete the project. Rural Development may, at its discretion and under certain circumstances, consider a one-time extension of the expiration date of the award up to 12 months. Grantee must notify Rural Development in writing with a supporting reason and advised expiration date of at least 10 days before the expiration date of the award. This one-time extension may not be exercised merely for the purpose of using unobligated balances. Grantee insurance and bonding. Grantee must maintain sufficient hazard insurance, workman's compensation insurance, and liability insurance as recommended by the grantee's attorney to protect the interests of the grantee and the government. Grantee shall provide satisfactory evidence to USDA Rural Development that all officers of the grantee's organization authorized to receive and/or disperse federal funds are covered by such bonding and/or insurance requirements as are normally required by the grantee and approved by USDA. Disbursement of grant funds. Grant funds will be dispersed by USDA Rural Development on a reimbursement basis not to exceed one reimbursement every 30 days. An original and one copy of SF 270, Request for Advancement of Reimbursement, will be submitted to USDA Rural Development. The financial management system of the recipient organization shall provide for effective control over and accountability for all funds, property, and other assets. Grant funds will not be dispersed until all provisions of any phase environmental review processes are complete in accordance with USDA Rural Development regulations. Grant funds will be transferred to the grantee via electronic funds transfer. The grantee will complete and deliver to USDA Rural Development Form SF 388-1, Electronic Funds Transfer Payment Enrollment Form. It is the intent of the grantee that all grant funds be dispersed within one year from the date of this letter, or in accordance with the grantee's approved scope of work, in accordance with Instruction 4280-E. Any funds not dispersed within 42 months from the date of obligation will be de, will be automatically deobligated. This is non-applicable. Copies of paid invoices, receipts, cancelled checks, et cetera, will be required as supporting documentation for the reimbursement. Rural area. You must certify that this project is located in a rural area as defined by RD Instruction 4280-E. Conflict of interest. Grantee will certify that no conflict of interest exists as outlined in RD Instruction 4280-E. Equal opportunity and nondiscrimination requirements. The grantee will comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Non-Discrimination in Federally Assisted Programs, Section 502 of the Rehabilitation Act of federally conducted programs and activities of the Age Discrimination Act of 1975, and Americans with Disabilities Act, Executive Order 13166, and Executive Order 11242. RD Forms 400-1, Equal Opportunity Agreement, and 400-4, Assurance Agreement must be completed by the grantee. The grantee will be subject to agency compliance reviews. Rural Development Environmental Justice and Civil Rights Impact Analysis Certification provides guidance on how to implement and, no thank you, implement environmental justice considerations into all agency programs, environmental reviews as part of the public involvement process. RD 200, 2006-38, Civil Rights Assessment is to be completed prior to obligation of grant funds and completion of grant projects to ensure that the major civil rights impacts of imposed actions are identified and the potential for negative effects are addressed prior to the approval of the agency's financial assistance. Prior to the obligation of funds, RD Instruction 2006-P requests certifying officials to identify and address civil rights impacts of proposed policy actions and the potential for negative effects based on race, color, sex, national origin, religion, age, disability, or marital and/or familial status, and to complete Form 2006-38 to assure that the agency, that a civil rights impact analysis has been completed and the potential effects of each proposed policy action have been considered. All borrowers and applicants must submit and have on file valid Form 400-1, Equal Opportunity Agreement, and 400-4 Assurance Agreement, which is attached. By signing those forms, recipients affirm that they will operate the program free from discrimination, the recipient will remain, will maintain the race and ethnic dive on the board members and beneficiaries of the program. The recipient will provide alternative forms of communication to persons with limited English proficiency. Compliance reviews. In addition to equal opportunity and nondiscrimination requirements stated above, each grantee must keep and provide data on race, gender, national origin, and any such records, accounts, and other sources of information and facilities as may be pertinent for the USDA RBS. To determine whether the grantee has compiled or are complying with the regulations, grantee should have available for USD, USDA RBS review financial, sorry, racial and ethnic data showing the extent to which members of minority groups are beneficiaries of federal assistance program. In addition, the compliance review will ensure that the equal access to the program benefits and activities are provided for persons with disabilities and language barriers. The nondiscrimination statement set forth below shall be posted in all USDA offices and included on all materials produced by USDA and its agencies for public information, public education, or public distribution. The statement below lists all prohibited bases for discrimination contained in the USDA Civil Rights Policy Statement. The statement shall be made available in English, in other languages appropriate to the local population served or directly affected by the USDA program or activity, and in alternative means of communication. Braille, large print, audiotape, et cetera. All laws, regulations, executive orders, and policies. USDA nondiscrimination statement is on the next page, the bottom of that page and on that next page. Okay, it actually goes on to show how you can file a program discrimination complaint, and I will read that. It has the address and also the facts and numbers. Recipients, page seven. The recipient will post a nondiscrimination statement in its entirety containing only those protected bases mandated in applicable federal law. USDA prohibits discrimination in all of its programs and activities on the basis of color, race, color, national origin, sex, disability, age, reprisal, or retaliation for prior civil rights activity. The full nondiscrimination statement must be included on all print and non-print items, included but not limited to audio, video, website, groceries, newsletters, bylaws, et cetera. If the size of the material is too small to include the full statement, the material will, at a minimum, include the following statement in print in the same size as the text. This institution is an equal opportunity provider. Recipients are required to notify applicants with disabilities and LEP persons of their right to free language assistance and accommodations, and free language assistance and accommodations upon request. And justice for all posters. The USDA poster "And Justice for All" will be the primary method utilized to inform customers of their rights. And that poster is included in that packet. The poster will be used for this purpose except when appropriate substitutes in outdoor areas are necessary. There are three versions of the "And Justice for All" poster. The grantee must also post "Equal Opportunity Employment is a Law" poster, which is attached. Please note that institutions participating in administering USDA programs are required to display the appropriate "And Justice for All" poster in their facilities where it can be viewed by customers. Reporting. Forms SF 425, Federal Financial Report, and the Project Performance Activity Report will be required on a quarterly basis when so all grant funds have been dispersed. Project reporting will begin when the grant is closed and when the date all parties have executed Form RD 1940-1. A final Project Performance Activity Report will be required after all grant funds have been extended or the term of the grant expires with the last SF 425. The final report may serve as a last quarterly report. Grantees shall constantly monitor performance to ensure that time schedules are being met. Project work by time periods is being accomplished if other performance objectives are being achieved. No USDA funds will be released without all reporting requirements being updated. And those reports have been attached. Grantee Project Performance Activity Report includes but should not be linked to the following comparison of actual accomplishments to the objectives established for that period, reasons why established objectives were not met, problems, delays, or adverse conditions that will affect the attainment of overall project objectives, et cetera. The final report. Final report. A final project performance report will be required with the financial, with the final federal financial report. The final report must provide the grantee's assessment and evaluation of the success of the project. Other report. RBS may require the grantee to prepare a report suitable for public distribution describing the accomplishments made through the use of the grant, and in the case which the grant funded the development or application of a best practice to describe that best practice. For Rural Business Development Grants where grant funds are used to acquire and/or improve an asset such as business incubator, real estate, or equipment, the grantee will verify to report the performance measured annually. The next section talks about audits, which we're not required because you're not getting more than $750,000 in grant funds, so we're going to skip that section there. Responsibilities of the grantee. The grantee must comply with the requirements set forth in RD Instruction 4280-8 and RD 4280-2, the Rural Business Development, the Rural Business Cooperative Financial Assistance Agreement. Grantee will certify in writing that they are in compliance with and will continue to comply with the applicable laws, regulations, executive orders, and/or generally applicable requirements, including those contained in 2 CFR 200 and 2 CFR 400 in effect on the date of grant approval and approved letter of conditions. Start of the project. The grantee is cautioned that expenditures should not be undertaken for which reimbursement is anticipated under this grant application until notified in writing that the grant has been approved and funds reserved. The grantee shall obtain prior approval for any change to the scope or objectives of the approved project. Failure to obtain prior approval of the changes in the scope or budget, the agency may suspend, terminate, and recover the grant funds. Other requirements. The agency will be responsible for any additional requirements of federal, state, and local governments that may apply in accordance with RD Instruction 4280-E and 2 CFR Part 200. State Historic Preservation Office. Following the award of any federal funding, submit a full, submit full project plans for HPT to review when available. These project plans should include description of renovation work, including treatment of roofing, masonry, siding, windows, entry doors, floor, wall, and ceiling materials, floor plan alterations, and MEP systems along with existing and proposed floor plan drawings and elevations. Project plan information should also include photographic documentation demonstrating severe deterioration where replacement of a historic feature is proposed. And also, US Fish and Wildlife Service, the monarch butterfly, the monarch butterfly is found in open habitats statewide and relies heavily on a variety of mated milkweed species and nectar-producing plants. Recommended volunteer conservation measures can be found at the following website. Closing instructions. The above conditions are based on proposed use of funds as outlined in financing arrangements as stated. The conditions as stated may be modified if the scope of work or cost of the project is changed, or the financial arrangements are adjusted. Any change or modification of the condition of the project must have prior approval by USDA Rural Development. Grant will be monitored and serviced in accordance with RD Instruction 4280-E Part 4280. And attached to the letter of conditions are the conditions for the construction portion. So please make sure that you read through that, and if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tamika, so much. All right, any discussion?
I have a couple of questions, ma'am. On page two, the use of the funds includes a food pantry. Okay, this, this facility is located in a historic district. What involvement would the Historic Preservation Commission have with this project, this grant?
Pardon me, I didn't hear any complete question.
The facility is located in the historic district?
That's correct.
And my question is, what involvement would the Historic Preservation Commission have with this grant process? Do they have any responsibilities or accountability, or a review, or any, any part?
No, because the exterior is not being touched. The interior is renovated only.
I actually have something to add to that, because on the letter of conditions, they did state that they wanted certain things done. And I, I know this was long, y'all. Let's see what page it was on.
Well, SHPO will want to have a complete set of plans.
Right.
They said that when we had the intergovernmental review letters. They said they approved it subject to receiving a complete set of plans because we only had a conceptual drawing of what was going into the interior. So when the grant is approved and we engage the architect, we will have to give SHPO a complete set of plans with their requirements, which are floor elevations, floor coverings, windows, and so forth, to approve for the project. That's on page nine and 10.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Other questions?
Yes, I have a couple more there. On page four, under eight, grantee will certify no conflict of interest exists. Wouldn't be an example of a conflict of interest, I was wondering.
If someone with the city was related to someone that worked with our, our agency, that would be considered a conflict of interest.
That works with your agency?
Yes.
Okay. And on page eight, the agency should be ensuring that a civil rights impact analysis has been completed. What's the timeline for that?
That's something that our office does.
Your office will do a civil rights impact analysis?
Yes, we do that on all of our projects, yes.
Okay. I have just one more. These posters, and Justice for All poster, and I think there's another poster. These are to be placed in a prominent location at City Hall?
On the site of.
On site?
Yes, on site of construction, yes.
Okay.
And I provided those posters to the clerk.
Okay, and I just had one other on, on page nine to make reference to the Historic Preservation Office. And that's my answer.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, we're at the vote. Yes, sir?
Would you like, Councilmember?
Yes. Alan?
Yes.
Alan, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, so we're going to ask you. Since you're not here, we can't physically see you.
How long?
Can you hear us? Yes, we can hear you, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so.
I did have one quick question.
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Lu, is Ms. Lucas present tonight?
Lucas.
Lucas, yes. She's physically here.
Lucas, is she present?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm sorry I missed you. I wanted to tell you, thank you so much for your patience with us. And, but in, in your presentation, now I'm on the tongue and I may have misunderstood this, but this, did, did I hear that this project has to be finished by March of '24?
Yes.
That was the date that you all put on your application, but it is, is.
I'm saying that we have to due to whatever we could get an extension. Well, I'm saying that we have to due to whatever we could get an extension. I mean, there's realities of construction.
Good. Well, that, that, Mayor, that was my question. I'm sure it's pretty common and to, to, to get extensions because, you know, that's eight months away.
I know.
There's a lot of.
Well, that's why we're getting started.
A lot of stuff gotta be done before this is even started, so for her, I, I, I guess there's availability of an extension.
All right. All right.
As far as the finish, finish on the project.
Yes.
All right, Alan, since we can't see you, we're going to offer you the first vote. We're bringing this to a vote now. All in favor? No, we haven't made a motion.
No, we didn't.
Were you to make a motion? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the grant, the USDA grant?
I make a motion that.
Aye.
I make the motion that we accept the grant to the US.
Okay. Do I have a second?
And the Magic Fund.
Second.
And it's only how.
Okay. All in favor. Alan, please go first. Alan, all in favor.
Aye.
And the rest of you?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
So let's move on.
I would like to say that, that I didn't realize this was just for the interior. I, I, I wanna put, uh.
No, it's exterior as well. It's exterior.
I, I, I'm there on, on the. Go ahead, go ahead, I, I'll take.
It covers the whole, it covers the whole building, Alan.
I've got one more, I'm.
Yes, all right. We're going to go ahead, this is on the capital improvement project list, but with accepting the grant with the timeframes, we're going to accelerate a motion forward to approve the capital project within the twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four capital plan. That will be renovation of the Freight Depot, which will require not only the hundred and seventy thousand dollar grant, but three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in sploshed funds. Do I have a motion to approve?
Sumed.
A motion forward. So, okay, that's second from Alan. All right, any discussion?
Okay, with this project, we are getting bids.
Bids.
A bid's gonna be, uh.
Bids.
Are we gonna get bids on these?
Are we gonna need bids?
Or, or is this one?
This is gonna do the work.
This is gonna do the work.
This is gonna do the work.
Lord Ex-Sergeant, we already have a architect for the Freight Depot. We put out requests for proposals a couple of years ago for the municipal auditorium and the Freight Depot, and Lord Ex-Sergeant got the job. They started with the municipal auditorium for the conci, um, condition assessment of that building. They have completed that, and now after two years, we have the Freight Depot. So they will be the lead, and they will do the construction plans. But they are an architectural firm that is steeped in historic preservation activities and buildings.
It's okay. All right, all in favor? You made the motion, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All in favor of adopting this project to move forward? Alan? Alan?
Aye.
Aye. The rest, ayes. Six of you are raising your hands. It passes unanimously. Freight Depot project is on. Do we have any citizen comments, Ryan?
No, sir.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Okay. Let's move on to the regular meeting. What time is it?
Seven and three.
It's seven and three. We move on to the regular council meeting, July the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. It's a call to order, let us stand for the invocation and the pledge allegiance. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, give us no trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy name is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty, and justice for all.
Will you taste, Alan?
Pardon?
Will you taste, and I'll have some fall back in?
Okay, do we have approval of the agenda? Do I have a motion?
I would like to, uh, make a motion to add to this agenda at the bottom. There's a heading that says council and staff comments, and it's not on this agenda.
Correct, it has been removed from the agenda. All right.
It has been removed from the agenda?
Removed from the agenda. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I wanna make a motion that a special meeting be called of the Administrative Committee for August the twenty-first.
For what purpose?
To discuss the, the handbook, the board.
Okay, that's not on the agenda tonight. That's, we're not talking about.
I'm trying to make a.
And you're trying to add things to the agenda that are not on the agenda tonight. This is a voting meeting. We've already said, if you want to add things, there goes on work session, which we did two weeks ago. This agenda is locked unless we have an emergency item to go on there, which we do not tonight. All right?
I want to add, make a motion to amend the agenda to include the heading council and staff comments, which is done normally done in the meeting.
No, it's, it's a, it is not normally done and not part of the decor.
It's been, it's a title that's been removed, so council and staff are not.
Let's move forward. Point of order. Do I have approval of the agenda?
I have a motion, Mr. Mayor. I made a motion.
All right. Do I have my second? Hearing none, we move on. Okay, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Sumed.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of the minutes. City Council regular meeting minutes, June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Sumed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I would like to make a motion, Mayor.
Aye.
What's the motion?
So already, people already got a motion.
I've already got a motion on the minutes.
So you've got a vote on that.
Okay.
I would like to amend it. I would like to amend the motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Correct.
To approve the minutes.
To approve the minutes, so there's no amending the motion.
You have to take a vote.
All in favor of approving the City Council regular meeting minutes, June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three?
I did not receive a copy of these in my packet. I did not receive a copy of the minutes to vote, to vote on, and it was not in my packet. And then I went up online and I saw several things on there that need to be corrected. So my motion was to.
We have a motion. If you so choose, you can vote against the minutes. All in favor of the minutes from June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three? Sitting by, they're raising your right hand, sitting aye. Okay, motion carries.
My motion is, my vote is no, not to approve the minutes because they're incorrect.
Okay. City Council work session meeting minutes, July tenth, twenty-twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Sumed.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Decision, second reading ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash sixteen to repeal ordinance number twenty-fourteen dash oh-four, adopted February twenty-fourth, twenty-fourteen, adopting chapter two, article nine procurement, and two sentences, Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, sir. This is the second reading and adoption of this ordinance that would repeal the procurement policy that is currently set by ordinance.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Sumed.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed.
No.
You're a no?
No. My vote is no.
Okay, that's, we're, we're, make it sure she records. Decision, second reading ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash seventeen to amend article four, fiscal administration, section four, ninety-five, purchasing of the charter by deleting the word ordinance and replacing it.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Can you just slow down just a little? I'm struggling.
Okay. All right. Decision, second reading ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash seventeen to amend article four, fiscal administration, section four point oh-five, purchasing of the charter by deleting the word ordinance and replacing it with the purchasing policies and procedures manual and for other purposes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that this, this ordinance be referred to the Administrative Committee.
The war, the motion tonight is to first approve this ordinance. Do I have a motion?
Well, you got a motion, so you gotta see if there's a.
Do we have a motion? Do I have a second to move it to the Administrative Committee? Hearing none, we move on. Do I have a motion to approve this ordinance?
Sumed.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
No.
We discussed it four times. Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You opposed?
No.
All right. Discussion, first reading ordinance number twenty-twenty-three eighteen to adopt city of Brantle noise ordinance. Mr. Clark, anything to add on this?
This is pretty much covers everything that we have currently now and also the future. Whenever we, you know, make you a townhouse, it's kind of medium, hotel, everything. It can cover everything from residential, commercial, and industrial noise, so if it's a noise, there is a rule that every noise must follow up, pretty much. That's it.
Correct. And again, this is not being voted on tonight. We vote on it at the end of August. Any discussion?
No, we just had, just to reiterate, we had the police or enforcement, and there's a penalty to go along with it, so it's not just a blank ordinance that doesn't have any.
Okay. All right, hearing done, moving on. Decision on mead power agreement for sale of excess power to city of Brantle on behalf of the city of Griffin. Do I have a motion?
Sumed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have Alan online or not? Or do we need it? We don't? Okay, we're good. All right. Decision on appointment of Courtney Long to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission to complete two-year term, which will expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, which council members nominated? Which council member is nominating this person for this?
None, she volunteered.
There is a.
She's a volunteer position.
On the application, there's a space for a council member to nominate a person from the community for our commissions, and I'm just asking who is nominating.
She came to the door. She came to the door. Nobody.
And the application is not signed? Her application's not signed?
Signed by her.
In the packet, the application's not signed?
It's, it's signed electronic. It's electronic signature.
How many members are on the Historic Preservation Commission that's present? Because when I went up online, they're not listed. Names of commissioners are not listed.
Three, yes, we're in four.
None of the commissions online. The names of who, certain, uh, missions are not listed on the line.
All right, we probably need to update it. Many things on the website need to be updated.
I know.
All right. We've made a motion. Do I have?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm staying.
Discussion on resolution number twenty-twenty-three eighteen, setting twenty-twenty-three annual millage rate for assessment of property taxes. Mr. Commissioner?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is a placeholder for right now because we will be voting on the millage rate after our public hearings on the seventh, fourteenth, and twenty-first of August. On the twenty-first of August, we will bring this resolution before you to set the millage rate. So this is just a placeholder. We will ask you to set the millage rate at five point two-two-eight mills, but that can only be done after our public hearings and our notice of tax increase, which the five point two-eight-eight will be. It will be a tax increase for property taxes. So that brings us to resolution number twenty-twenty-three nineteen to adopt the city of Granville fiscal year twenty-twenty-three-twenty-four. I call it fiscal year twenty-four budget. Now, again, we will be holding three public hearings. And as I told you on the work session, our general fund is in a fiscal hole, hole. Our proposed fiscal year twenty-four budget is balanced, is based on our twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one millage rate of five point two-two-eight, which is above the rollback rate of three point six-two-five. We will hold three public hearings. One will be at nine o'clock on Monday, August the seventh, in the council chambers. The second will be on Monday, August the fourteenth, at six-thirty before our work session, and then we will have a special call meeting of the city council on Monday, August the twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, at six-thirty PM, which at that time, we will have before you the resolution on the property tax millage rate.
All right.
Now, I just want to read you, if I could, please. This will be in the Noonan Times Herald, but before it appears, I would just like you to know about it. It says, "The city of Granville today announces its intentions to increase the twenty-twenty-three property taxes. It will levy this year by forty-two, pardon me, by forty, forty-four point two-two percent over the rollback millage rate." Now, redating context, it doesn't say we're raising taxes by forty-four point twenty-two percent. It says we're raising taxes by forty-four point twenty-two percent over the rollback millage rate. And then it tells you about it. Each year, the Board of Tax Assessors is required to review the assessed value for property tax purposes of taxable property in the county. When the trend of prices on properties that have been recently sold in the county indicate that there has been an increase in the fair market value of any specific property, the Board of Tax Assessors is required by law to re-determine the value of such property and adjust the assessment. This is called a reassessment. So while the city is raising property taxes, what does that, that mean to our residents? Well, the tentative increase will result in a millage rate of five point two-two-eight mills, an increase of one point six-zero-three mills. Without the tentative increase, your millage rate would be at the rollback rate. The proposed tax increase for a home with a fair market value of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is approximately eighty dollars and fifteen cents. Eighty dollars and fifteen cents over the year. $80.15 over the year. And a proposed tax increase for non-home-stated property with a fair market value of $150,000 is approximately $96.18. So, while the 42.22% is high, sounds high, the proposed tax increase is below $100 annually for both non-home-stated and homesteaded property. That is a product of reassessment and inflation. And that's all I have to say on the budget. Again, after we have three public hearings, we'll have an opportunity to vote on it.
Let me add one other thing, just for public knowledge, and I do talk about it, and I will talk about it again this week on my live Q and A at this point. The House State Legislature passed an HB 18, which Governor Kemp signed. What it adds is another $8,000 in homestead exemption to homesteaders, if you own your home. $8,000 more exemption. So basically, this $80 you're referring to, it's probably going to net out close to no increase whatsoever for this year. And just as a piece to that, the city of Granville doesn't get penalized because the county then turns around for the money we don't get. The county turns around, goes to the state. The state has over a billion dollars sitting there. But they're going to send that money back to the county and then back to us. So we don't feel the effect. But the effect to you homeowners is your taxes are going to be less. And when you get the bill, you'll actually see that. So I want to add that, just as an FYI.
You have to apply for that.
Do you have to apply? I thought it was automatic.
What's the deadline on homestead exemption?
Because the county was going to do that for homesteaders.
For homestead exemptions?
Yes.
I don't know.
Let's, let's take a look at that, because I thought that was automatic, actually. So, we'll, we'll cover that.
Well, those who, who are homesteaded get it automatically.
Yes, automatic.
You do not have to apply for it again.
Right.
A lot of new homeowners don't understand that they have to make applications.
For homestead. Yes, that's true. Okay. Any discussion?
Discussion on what?
Well, just general on the budget.
Which, which item are we on? Because you look the two of them together, the report on the assessment, the millage.
Well, do we have, do we have any discussion on any of the items? On the budget or the millage?
Related to that, the revenue and expenditure statement that was given to us. When the column says that the budget has been 100% used, how is staff dealing with that? Because there's many of them where 100% have been used.
So there's only one that's been 100% used, and that's actually the city council. So what we then do is dip into additional funds to cover the overage. And I believe the city council is the only one that is over 100% used at this point.
Are we talking about the one that we got on the table?
Yes. This is monthly budget that they've got.
Yeah, the revenue and expenditure.
The city council is the only one that's over 100%.
City council is at 88%.
Right.
Some of their items.
Are over 100.
Are over 100.
Right. And we only have two more months to go, so, we're actually, yeah, two months.
Well, this revenue and expenditure statement is done 30 June, so you're, that's nine months. It should be 75%. The council is at 88%. The mayor's at 41%, and everybody else is below 75%.
Right. All right. Other questions?
This statement that I have just indicates that there are many categories that are over 100%.
Only in the city council.
71. This, are we talking about the same statement?
Yes. No, no other, no other unit, nobody is over 100% in total of their budget at this point.
But you're not looking at the level of control? I think she was looking at the individual at the top, not the total at the bottom.
Well, you have to look at the total at the bottom.
Yeah, the level of control is at, is at the bottom line.
It's the bottom line, right.
For each part.
And nobody's over 100% at this point.
So in, in the department, you move monies around?
Well, we always have, we have discretionary funds that is within the budget to cover things.
In a department, you can move monies around?
Okay.
That was a correct statement.
All right.
Okay, that's, that's what I, that's, that's what I thought.
Okay. Any other discussion?
When will that public notice appear in the paper?
Public notice?
Yeah, about the three public hearings.
Will be in the paper, the Noonan Times Herald, this Saturday's edition. And it will be for three following, pardon me, two following Saturdays. So you'll see it for three weeks in a row. Your tax dollars at work.
All right.
Will it be a display item?
Pardon me?
Will it be a display advertisement?
There are some requirements that are, will be displayed, 30 inch, 30 square inches, yes, and others will not.
Okay. All right, hearing no more, we'll move on. Discussion on resolution number 2023-20 to adopt the updated 2024-29 capital improvement plan. So we went over it last week, and I'm just going to ask, and tonight we approved one of those projects to move forward. So instead of going damn ad nauseam in detail, do you have any, we're not living on it tonight, but the end of August. Do you have any questions on any of those projects at this point?
Yeah, my question, Mr. Mayor, is regarding the sewer line and the tree trimming. These, these, these projects are over, one's $50,000 and the other one's $100,000. And it's noted that these are going to be preferred vendors, and they're not going to.
So the tree trimming is correct, we do not. We use LaGrange Power. We have an intergovernmental agreement with them, so we do not. They do all of our tree trimming, all of our electrical work, so we will stay with them for the tree trimming.
We have an agreement that we won't go to bid for a contract that's over $50,000?
Which, which one are you referring to, you know?
The sewer line is $50,000. So we have an agreement that we will not request bids on this contract. Is that correct?
That's correct. That'll be a preferred vendor who has done all the sewer lines and the water lines in the city of Granville since its inception.
Correct.
Okay. One more question. Related to capital improvement plan, the parts. Is there anything in that dollar amount that would include the part that's over on Merryweather Street?
Not at this time.
Not at this time?
Mm-hmm.
So the only parts that are going to, to benefit from this particular budget would be which parts?
Griffin and Post. We always have more years to do more, so we need to focus on those two first. It's going to require quite a bit of focus to bring them up to standard. All right. Anything else? All right. Any citizen comments, Rob?
No, sir.
All right. Having a point of business for the city of Granville?
I would like to make a report, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, we are adjourned.
All right. The meeting's adjourned. Yeah, you've done a wonderful job. Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your vacation.